I've watched the movie several times. It's absolutely hilarious.
That's the one based around the rap group that went and sold the pot from the... What was the premise of that movie?
He was like this poor kid who got selected to be this gentleman spy. And they sent him through the school and like the character of the gentleman. Remember the gentleman? You think that's like where the British?
Yeah, yeah. We rotate. Right. Yeah. Let's see, that's where they're at. Yeah, we have, I think. If we live in... Well, that loses promise. It's, yeah. It's freedom. Like, sleep is... Right. We got that. At night, he unhooks the tube into his long leg. Left in a playboy gant and hooks it onto a trilogy. And the little... And the... His old hands are on the... Yeah, 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 yeah. Have you ever... Yeah. I've seen you. Um, we did. You're coming on. She's just like... She's... She's... So, it's... So, it's... Now, look, I feel... So, yes. So, that... And then they're all sparring. So, this... They're moving in your town. They pay for it. He goes, it's a good... When he... Eyes are on red behind his eyes. But, yeah, he gets... So, me... Yeah. Because you make us close. And I... He says, "What's with this?" "I'm sure when this..." "He's not asking." "Okay." "But I did..." "I'm related to him." "Like..." "And he tells him, 'Look at him.'" "I said, 'No.'" "He's a..." "So..." "I didn't realize he's risking..." "And, well, I didn't know what." "Yeah." "It's..." "Yeah." "Yeah." "The fraud." "No." "Come on, America." "I was scared." "He's... Yeah." "Yeah." 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 "Yes." 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 "Yeah." 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 "He gets..." "It's..." "So, uh..." "And, uh..." "They..." "They..." "They showed it for the time." "But..." "Then he has..." "That's just..." "Not my concern." "Yeah." "That's why I see that." "I thought those people..." "Only..." "That..." "Yeah." "Yeah." "Right." "Right." "And that's..." "Yeah." "Yeah." "I don't know." "I don't know." "I don't know." "Thank you." "And..." "And..." "Ten." "Good." "And, um..." "I was concerned." "You know, do you know..." "It's not..." "It's..." "It's not..." "Um..." "I'm..." 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 "That's very nice." "And they go into you, then expect you to..." "Yeah." 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 "Right." "Yeah." "He was straight." "So, yeah." "Because he has..." "He was..." "Every time." "And..." "He takes..." "Six or seven." "And, you know..." "Six thirty." "But..." "He's..." "So, this one, he says, 'I'm ready.' "And I..." "And I'm like..." "I really..." "And he says, 'I'm ready, though.'" "I'm sorry." "I'm saying it." "Yeah." "It's..." "It starts from the..." "Oh, this is..." "This is..." "See, it's..." "It's like a... "The mom for..." "Yeah." "Just..." "Yeah." 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 "Oh, no." "Okay." 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 "Yeah." 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 "Cause we can, uh..." "Yeah." 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 "See, that..." "Yeah." 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 "It's..." "Looks like..." "She's..." "Yeah." "See, it's six months or three months, whatever." "Yeah." 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 "He's not just..." "Yeah." "He says it." "We're a little more..." "We're..." "We're..." "He says..." "He wants..." "He says..." "I told you." "Yeah." "He says..." "He says..." "He says..." "Patient, extreme..." "Never..." "I..." "I..." "He..." "He..." "He is hilarious." "I see." "I..." 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 "But I'm telling him, I was like..." "It happened to... "I just sit there and lie." "You know." "I was just..." "I'm like, 'Three.'" "People come in." "How you doing?" "I'm like..." "I squeeze it." "I'm like, 'Okay.'" "I give... "I say, 'Hey, man.'" "I said, 'We got a lady.'" "And I thought it was a... "And..." "And..." "And he said..." "He said..." "I do." "But..." "Yeah." "Man." "No, it's..." "It's a baby." "But she's..." "Completely..." "Thirty years old." "She's not a baby." "And..." "You know, I just think about..." "Cause Robby..." "I'm like..." "I feel..." "I feel..." "I feel..." "I feel..." "I feel..." "Um..." "I..." "I..." "Uh-huh." "And, um..." "Very broad, yes." "I just..." "Yeah." "It's..." "Yeah." "I..." "So, I think it's, uh..." "It's just..." "I got the bad." "Yeah." 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 "Um..." "It's..." "It's..." "And..." "And..." "Yeah." "They're not able..." "You..." "Yeah." "And..." "I don't like..." "I'm like..." "I'm like..." "I'm like..." "Coffee." "And..." "That'll change." "Now, say, 'Don't rotate.'" "I thought..." "It's just..." "Yeah." "Now, push it." "Yeah." 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 "That could go as a..." "I'm not with it." "Yeah." 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 "The young..." "If..." "I don't like them." "I don't think I want them." "Yeah." "Yeah." "I can't..." "And you say..." "Yeah." "Yeah." "And..." "Yeah." "That's just like..." "It's true." "Yeah." 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 "I'm like about time I get them out more." "And..." "Everyone I have..." "Yeah." "Which we have ten more." "And, you know, guys..." "Two years since they..." "It's, uh..." "I do it really..." "Yeah." "Yeah." "He was..." "I'm sure he..." "Momma." "So, tell me about the..." "The..." 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 "No?" "Yeah." 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 "Oh, yeah." "We've been having that office..." "A little more..." "And you..." "Mash up every time." "Yeah." "We get that." 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 "Yeah." 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 "I was so..." "Yeah." "My brother... "He's..." "I'm like, 'Well, I'm just..." "I'm just..." "Yeah." "Yeah." "It was on a one." "And that's..." "Oh, it's..." "Watch." "I..." 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 "I see for it." "We plan it." "I think they go..." "First." "Oh, so..." "We..." 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 "I..." "We..." 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 "We catch..." "We..." 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 "But..." "I'm on..." "I'm..." 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 "Well, that's..." "That's what I'm with." "That we used to..." "I'm..." 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 "Well, you..." "You..." 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 "Now..." "I..." 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 "Yeah." "What..." "Yeah." 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 "Well..." "Me..." "So, it..." "My grandparent..." "Was..." "That doesn't..." "To pick us up with your disc." "Because..." "Yeah." "He's a... "Yeah." "Yeah." "Three." "Okay." "Big ol'..." "Yeah." 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 "Longer than..." "Yeah." "It's..." "The..." 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 "Yeah." "So, it's done." "Okay." "Okay." "Yeah." 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 "That's..." "Yeah." "Yeah, because women have..." "But I'm like, 'No.'" "Somebody... "They just sort of like, you know..." "I can't remember..." "I'm going..." "I'm going..." "I don't respect..." "I don't..." "I don't..." "I don't..." "Yes." "Um..." "Oh, yeah." 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 "Yeah." "Oh, yeah." 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 "You..." "Staying..." "Still..." "Is..." 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 "I'm like..." 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 "At the..." "On the..." "City Council meeting..." "In Rocky Mountain City Council meeting." "Uh, this time, I would like to ask, uh, Councilman Joyner, if you would please lead us in the moment of prayer." "You stand."
Almighty God, as we gather tonight, as community council leadership, help us, oh God, to come seeking your wisdom, seeking your knowledge, seek the best outcome for the good of all your people. We thank you for every skill and every gift. May it be used for your glory, we pray. Amen. Amen.
Yeah, this time, I'd like to ask the city clerk, if you please help roll.
Yes, remember that?
Here.
Blackwell. Joyner.
Here.
PJ Walker. Daughtry.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Jafar Swatner.
Here.
We have four. Uh, this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for consideration of the minutes of the regular scheduled city council meeting to be settled, uh,确定 August twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
No.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Councilman Harris. Is there need for discussion? Hear none. All in favor, please say aye. Uh, all opposed, like sign. Item five is consideration of additions and or deletions to the minutes, uh, to the agenda. Uh, we have two. Uh, one is the ordinance of amending chapter sixteen of the Code of the City of Rocky Mountain entitled Personnel Plan of the City of Rocky Mountain. It's me. Oh, we're considering that. Uh, it's being considered. Everybody has got a copy of that. Uh, and item two is a reduction in the scheduled contribution to the Rocky Mountain Chamber of Commerce, the amount of, uh, a thousand dollars per pound. Uh, is there a motion, uh, to amend? First of all, is there any other things to be added or deleted from the agenda tonight? Consideration? I'm sorry.
Will you do anything about, uh, maybe? Okay.
Okay. All right. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to add these to the agenda tonight.
So...
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman, uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Harris made the motion, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there need for discussion? Hear none. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, this time, I'll turn the matter over to, uh, the meeting over to our city manager, Hilton Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everybody. Uh, last week, we broke ground on the new industrial village located at the intersection of Thomas A. Betts Parkway and Peel Road. This fifty-five point five acre development is strategically designed to accommodate flexible industrial spaces ranging from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand square feet. The first building is on track for completion in early twenty-twenty-six. Once fully built out, this project is expected to create nearly three hundred jobs, generate over forty-three million dollars in total economic output, and provide a minimum taxable building value of twenty-eight point nine million dollars. I'd also like to congratulate the Rocky Mountain Event Center on receiving Convention South Magazine's two thousand twenty-five Reader's Choice Award and earning two Stella Awards, a Silver for Best Conference Center nationally and a finalist in the Southeast for Best Convention Center overall. Congratulations to the event center. On Thursday, October sixteenth, the Rocky Mountain Police Department will host Cones for the Cop from two to four P.M. at Scoops on Main Street. This is a great opportunity to enjoy a sweet treat and connect with some of the officers who serve our community. On Saturday, October eighteenth, we invite families to join us at the Rocky Mountain Event Center for Scoop Tackler October Fest from two P.M. to five P.M. The first three hundred kids will receive a free treat bag, and there will be plenty of family-friendly fun activities and, of course, costumes. The Eastern Carolina Barbecue Throwdown returns to the Helen P. Gay Rocky Mountain Historic Train Station on October twenty-fourth and October twenty-fifth. This year's event will include a dedicated children's play area, food trucks, and live performances, including Grammy Award-winning artist Trey Pierce and the T-Sonics, along with other incited musical guests. We invite residents of all ages, all ages, to join the cool blue boat bike ride on Saturday, October twenty-fifth at ten A.M.
Celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month traces back to nineteen forty-five, when Congress enacted a law declaring the first week in October each year, the National Employee, the Physically Handicapped Week. And whereas in nineteen sixty-two, the word physically was removed to acknowledge the employment needs and contributions of individuals with all types of disabilities. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, Congress expanded the week to a month and changed the name to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas workplaces welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and a strong economy. Whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with those disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Rocky Mountain, North Carolina commitment to the inclusive community that increases access and opportunities to all, including individuals with disabilities. Now therefore, I by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Rocky Mountain, hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five is Disability Employment Awareness Month and call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in the city to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities to advance the important message that people with disabilities add value and talent to the workplace and community. And whereas, and be it further resolved, the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina pledges to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities. In witness hereof, I have here unto, set my hand and calls the seal of the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina to be affixed this sixth day of October of the year of two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Perfect. Big smile. Three, two, and okay, hold it. Three, two, and okay. Thank you.
I recognize Councilman Adjourner.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me thank our inter-chief, Martin Corrigan, officers for our Faith in Blue celebration last week and thank those that attended. And thank the ecumenical faith base that came out and lifted up their prayers and concerns from the various faiths for our Faith in Blue. So it was a great turnout. And again, want to thank our city and our faith base for uniting together to support our police organization.
Thank you, committee. This time, petition is to be received from the public. This is an opportunity for public comment, and we thank you for coming to the city council meeting tonight to share your views. We value all citizen input. Speaker comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes during the public comment period, and at the conclusion of three minutes, each speaker shall leave the podium. Comments must be directed to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, action, or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period in the board's discretion. If they refer issues to the appropriate city officials or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on a comment issue, please designate one person to present the group's comment, which shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes. At this time, I'd like to invite Sally Battle to the podium.
Good afternoon to Mayor and City Councilmen and Women, and to all of you. My name is Sally Battle. I live at twelve thirty-three Hill Street, Rocky Mountain, and I'm in Ward Three. I had a problem with the sewer in January, and I called the city. They said, call a plumber. I called a plumber, and I acquired, hired a plumber in to do the work, and they scheduled it for February the fourth. They replaced my main sewer line from the house to the hookup in the street, to the hookup, city hookup. The contractor was going to do the complete job, but the man from the city said, no, the city were going to do their part. But the city hasn't been the due day part. And in June, I'm still having the same problem with the stool backing up, and I called the city, and they said, call a plumber. And so last week, last Thursday, I'm still having the same problem backing up. And the city came out, and they told me to call a plumber. I called a plumber. He came, and he warned it out. He said he couldn't go any further that was on the city part, and I would like for the city to come and fix their problem so my stool won't keep backing up in my home.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. I have your information here, and just talked with Manager Daniel. He said he will follow up with you. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Snafflin O'Ree.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members present. It is deeply concerning that while the city of Rocky Mountain faces a significant budget deficit, the burden is being extended and placed on our residents and frontline employees, those who bear the greatest responsibility for sustaining essential services. Employees are facing the loss of their annual raises this year, the suspension of longevity pay, and the disappointment of having their cost of living adjustments eliminated. However, certain recent salary decisions that have substantially contributed to the city's current circumstances have not been adjusted as they could. Granted, two salaries have been eliminated due to the departure of the individuals from the organization. For example, the former HR director, who was earning, who went from an eighty-two dollars, seventy-seven cents per hour rate to ninety-four dollars, sixty-nine cents per hour rate. He's no longer here, if you're she. And the former police chief, who earned eighty-four dollars, point eighty-four cents to ninety-six dollars an hour, is no longer here. And we still have the business and collections director, who went from seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents to eighty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. And this could be considered an exorbitant increase. And the central service director went from forty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour to fifty-three cents and fifty-six cents an hour. Maybe this could be considered for a reduction also. These actions present a holding message, a troubling message. The budget shot falls, including these resulting from decisions made under the former city manager along with substantial compensation increases granted to select individuals, will be the offset at the expense of those least able to bear the burden, such as children, widows, people with disabilities, which we just honored. Additionally, there are leadership concerns as some individuals in such roles fail to model appropriate treatment toward their staff while on job. I find it highly unlikely these same leaders would ever grant an employee within their department an immediate eleven dollars per hour increase. And I'm concerned that when I was here before, earlier, requesting an increase for sanitation workers, I don't ever remember that being provided. And so those workers may be suffering too. A leader should be a servant. We elected our leaders to serve us, not to rob us. I have my light bill from nineteen twenty, I mean, yeah, nineteen twenty-three, in an unoccupied residence. The monthly cost went up forty-six dollars and ninety and fifty-nine cents this year.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to invite James Reckman to the podium.
Mayor, Member, Council, City Managers, and Ministers. My name is James Kenneth Reckman, and I appear before you today not just as a resident of Rocky Mountain, but someone whose life has been defined by service, accountability, and defense of public trust. I am a combat veteran. I have over nineteen years of federal service, both in active-duty military and civilian roles supporting national security and public administration. I hold a master's degree in data analytics and cybersecurity, and I work for a financial sector as a security engineer dealing with some of the biggest financial industries in this country and protecting billions of dollars of people's money. Forcing regular reliance and audit high-risk financial transactions, this experience has taught me something very clear. Systems of control only function when they are built on integrity, transparency, and accountability. Today, I come to you at both a professional and taxpayer. I have worn the nation's uniform. I have wore the responsibility of being a resident of Rocky Mountain, a city I chose to invest in, chose to live in, and still believe in. Yet I stand here deeply concerned because the state of Rocky Mountain's financial management does not reflect stewardship, transparency, or justice. Since twenty twenty-three, my property taxes have raised one hundred and ninety-three percent. My electric bill, when I first moved here in twenty twenty-three, was around four hundred dollars. In the last four months, it has gone up to almost six to seven hundred dollars every month, even though I am not using that much electricity. I have re-registered my vehicles down here, and the property tax on a vehicle was six hundred and seventy-five dollars for one vehicle. And I'm getting charged for every time it rains on my utility bill, not for sewage runoff or water. I'm literally being charged for Mother Nature. And if you don't believe me, look at the bill you've sent out. What makes this situation even more alarming is that the city itself had admitted this through its own financial updates and reports, some that go all the way back to twenty twenty, which I did pull from the North Carolina State, and you do know this. These are not rumors. These are actual figures. Yet despite the budget certifications and signs submitted to the state of North Carolina as early as twenty twenty, fully knowing well that internal controls of financial managements were failing, warranting rise back to twenty twenty-three by a couple of your council members, it took you two years to tell the public?
Thank you, Mr. Reckman.
And I have a lot more to say about this.
Well, I'd be happy to take, if you'd like, my photocopy or hand it to the chief here. We'll make sure that everyone in the council gets a copy. Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Yes. I'd like to invite Tasha Aldridge to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Tasha Aldridge. Now, my husband can't come up here and speak because he's a city employee. And I say that because no matter how much you say that city employees can talk, they can't. This is just one of the odd named jobs being taken out. So I wanted to discuss some of the recent issues concerning budget that I know many of you have seen because I am quite vocal online. I run a business myself, so I know numbers. I don't run a government, but I can easily look at the audits and your compliance reports from the last few years and just carry over numbers alone when y'all can't see that and then sit here and try to tell everybody, we don't know what happened. It's not good. Not good at all. This week, I had to sit and I had to sew one of my husband's shirts, long-sleeved shirt, that he has to wear. Now, keep in mind, his uniforms have to be fire retardant. I had to sew a shirt because one of the many things that are being cut is impacting their uniforms. Now, I don't mind sewing it. Anybody should be, you know, happy to mend clothes and fix things, but it's just the point. I'm having to sew holes in shirts because of financial decisions that everybody is sitting up here making that they didn't have a choice in. With recent remarks on how much pay has been affecting the budget, I want to know how in the twenty twenty-three payroll, when y'all reevaluated pay, the impact was only supposed to be three point two million dollars. Longevity for employees that have been here tenured, which are getting lower, which is something that is statistic, it's going to end and phase itself out over the next ten to fifteen years. It's a million dollars. So we're talking about four million dollars impacting a budget that is a multimillion-dollar issue, but yet the first thing y'all ready to run to is affect employees' pay, their longevity, performance raises that they have worked their butts off for the past year where they have earned you guys, their departments, excellence, OSHA compliance, and many more. But you're ready to miss what they're paying. You're affecting their households. You're affecting livelihoods. You're affecting their retirement. Do you realize that in a bunch of your employees where you're calculating the last four years, the money from longevity and their pay for performance, when they go to retire, you're starting to affect them by a couple of hundred dollars a month in what they can earn in retirement? Based on the calculations for a typical standard, the website that the city puts out there for people to calculate how much they can earn in retirement?
Thank you. I'd like to invite Antoinette Cutler to the podium.
Good evening. City Manager, City Mayor, City Councilman, and to each of you in your respectable places on this afternoon. My name is Pastor Antoinette Cutler, and I reside in the city of Rocky Mountain that I am very proud to call home. I'm here on this afternoon to ask a question, a question that many of us as citizens probably have on our mind, but just don't know how to direct it. My question is this. Why didn't one of you go to the city mayor, one-on-one, and let him know? Because of the city manager at that time and contracts over ninety thousand dollars was being signed all along and would not allow you all to see the complete budget of what was really going on in the city? Why didn't one of you? It only took one of you to go over his head to LGC or the proper authority concerning our city and this budget? Why didn't one of you go to the city mayor, one-on-one, and let him know that if the town manager would not release these things concerning our city and the budget, that you have the right to take the authority to go to LGC or the proper authority over LGC concerning our city? Now, I don't stand here before you and say that I know it all. But I got a few people in government that knows a little bit more than I do, that I am connected to and have educated themselves and continue to educate me. So as to your question on this afternoon, why didn't one of you? Because it only took one to go over the mayor's head and get to the proper authority?
Thank you, Ms. Battle. I'd like to invite Matt Roush to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Matt Roush, fifty Merchant Court, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. Honorable Members of the City Council and Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Once again, my name is Matt Roush, co-owner of Title Data Systems located here in Rocky Mountain. Our company started in late twenty-two and has made a substantial investment in the city. In twenty twenty-four alone, Title paid the city four point nine million in electrical and taxes, accounting for fifteen percent of the city's commercial industrial revenue. We are projected to pay five point eight million to the city in twenty twenty-five. On top of that, our new investment that would generate over one million in additional annual revenue to the city is now currently on hold. Our forecast for twenty twenty-six is that we will pay the city of Rocky Mountain over seven million dollars for electrical and taxes, taxes accounting for fifteen to twenty percent of the city's industrial revenue. The future, that's future growth, future income that's already in motion. We are your most reliable and consistent revenue contributors. However, this trajectory is now at risk due to recent proposed rate increases. We received notice on June twenty-sixth of the rate increase effective July first, just three days' notice, which increased our costs three hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. More recently, we were informed of a second, even larger proposed rate increase to be applied retroactively to October first, twenty twenty-five, before this council even voted on it. That increase would raise our costs nine hundred thousand dollars annually. Combined, we're looking at close to a twenty percent increase in annual utility costs or one point two million dollars annually with no advance warning and no opportunity for input. This creates serious issues. We have contractual obligations with our clients. Sudden or retroactive changes put us in breach of those agreements, damaging relationships we spent years building. I want to make sure I am very clear. If this rate increase moves ahead as planned, our company will be forced to shut down or relocate our operations. This decision will not only erase millions of dollars in current and future revenue to the city as well as loss of confidence in the city's business environment. And here's the biggest question we need to ask. If the city increases electrical rates to a level that forces major contributors like us to shut down or leave, how will that impact future rates for everyone else? When we exit, the city will lose millions of dollars in annual revenue. That lost revenue will have to be made up elsewhere, and burden will inevitably fall on other rate payers, residents, small businesses, and remaining commercial users. We are not asking for special treatment. We're asking for fairness, transparency, and responsible decision-making. We respectfully urge the council the following. Pause any retroactive rate increases until a further accounting of the city's finances are complete so an appropriate can be formulated. Two, allow the city council to hear from businesses like ours, as well as citizens, as how these increases will impact them. And thirdly, work with the business community on balanced, forward-looking solutions. We want to grow here. We want to continue investing, but we need a city that's committed to stability, partnerships, and long-term vision.
Thank you, Ms. Battle.
Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you.
I do have some documents I'd like to leave with you guys just as a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Dr. Koo to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Koo. I find it astonishing that it took so long for you all to discover the ex-city manager's financial mismanagement that put the city in such a dire financial crisis. From about one hundred million dollars to twenty million is a huge drop, and no one, even the banker among you, saw this coming. The hole is now so big that those of you who want to cover it can no longer do so. You put the city in very real danger of losing its autonomy from state receivership, especially now. Raising the thirty million you need in so short a time may not be achievable. What is even more frustrating were the latter two town hall meetings where council members never acknowledged their roles in causing this liquidity crisis. What is the committee of the whole for if not to explore and prevent such a disaster? For too long, we've watched the ex-city manager continue to evade answering questions. He would not have behaved in this kind of impunity without some council support, would he? We were told to start with the present only, like we don't have a past. What past mistakes were made? If we cannot learn from the past, then we have no future. And if you cannot admit your role in creating this disaster, why are we to believe you when you tell us we have to tighten our belts? People here are already strapped so tightly with mounting debts, homelessness, runaway inflation, stagnant wages, that we cannot breathe. You're squeezing blood from a stone. Council created this, and council need to come out with ideas on how to deal with, without, how to deal with this without increasing taxes on utility bills. In this economic climate, attracting new investment is difficult. Incorporations were asked for large incentives and tax breaks that we cannot afford with no guarantees they will stay for extended periods that benefit the city. Data centers are environmentally disastrous. Natron, the company that you cited as a potential at the last city retreat, is now out of business. You can sell more unused land, stop unnecessary road reconstruction, and constant unrelenting road repairs that smell like a scam. Like, for example, the area three-three-six you talk about that you're going to develop to, and you will have, you have more, more money when you sell it. But the question is that how are you going to develop if you don't even have money right now? Who's going to lend you the money? And you can stop the bonuses on top people, lay off useless, overpaid administrators, and unnecessary support staff, but leave service workers alone as they are essential. You can stop using consultants for whom you pay thousands we cannot afford and end up shelving the studies in some city archive, never to be used again. You can stop giving city jobs to private companies like trash pickup, park maintenance, janitorial services, et cetera.
Thank you, Dr. Koo. I'd like to invite Ms. Flory Minjus to the podium.
Let me just say, I used to come here a lot. Been slack lately. I usually have never been on my side of Dr. Koo. But believing or not, she hit it, the nail on the head. I mean, I wanted to say to start out with that I am truly disappointed of our city council. How you got us in such a deep, deep hole I can never figure out. To me, all you guys either owned your own business, have retired, have done very well in what y'all done. Nonprofit people have done very well. I know that you did not run your own companies into the ground like I feel like you've run the city. Y'all are the ones that are supposed to be taking care of us. I don't feel like you've done it. And I would also like to say, I'm so stinky mad at the citizens of Rocky Mountain for finding out y'all don't know what's going on, and don't tell me it's the previous administration because most of y'all were the previous administration. And y'all were the ones that picked those slack puppets of city managers to do your bidding. I mean, some of those people had, I don't know, brought terrible baggage, but y'all, y'all chose them over who? Anywho, I'm also mad at the citizens of Rocky Mountain for not coming out and voting. My gosh, we find out that y'all've lost millions of dollars, and they vote you back in. Why? It doesn't make any sense. Y'all were nice-looking people. But did you not? But did you not, were people really giving y'all bad information in reports so y'all didn't know what was going on? And y'all thought that those people were so smart that they wouldn't be BSing you? Don't they know how to do their job? I'm really, really hurt. And all that want to know, I'm originally from Greensboro. Greensboro city council people get about $28,400 a year. You know what it said on the internet thing? Y'all make $60,000 a year. How big time is Rocky Mount over Greensboro? And the rest of the, I mean, look it up. Wilson people get, okay.
Thank you. I do feel the correct, we do not make $60,000 a year. So the neighborhood of $18,000 to $19,000, I believe, is the correct.
Well, good.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Ms. Dancy to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, the current city manager and your staff for all you're doing trying to correct the issue. I'm Camilla Stacey II. I preside the pine tops. However, I have been working in Rocky Mount for 38 years and 10 months. I represent family, friends, enemies, and enemies of Rocky Mount. I have been attending the meeting longer than any council member on this council today. Recording the meeting since tonight is long before the pandemic, and the city of Rocky Mount started recording out of pocket so I could educate folk. And then it tickles the head a little bit that you still come down here with craziness, uninformed. If citizens have been paying attention, they would know that two council members been questioned, informed the city manager Keith Rogers for information, and he kept saying he would come back with the full report. Every council member up here was at the meeting, so nobody had to go tell nobody anything when all of you was at the meeting. So turn out the craziness. I'm still waiting on the full report. So it's coming. Whenever, wherever chips late, the full report is coming. Don't listen to the noise, do what y'all gotta do because they're sidetracking progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dancy. I'd like to invite Thelma Boyd to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, councilman, everyone assembled. First and foremost, I want to extend a deepest gratitude for everyone, voters, volunteers, supporters during the campaign. I'm here this evening to express concerns of those who have spoken with me during the campaign time. Just my ward alone, fewer than 700 cast in ballots. It's clear that there's still work to be done in engaging our communities and ensuring every voice is heard. This election took a great hold on the citizens here. It placed a difficult time, I say, put it that way. The recent revelations of financial management and the resorting burden placed upon our citizens understandably weighed heavily on their hearts and their decisions. And the effects, as we can see, are deeply felt across Rocky Mount, where everyone calls Rocky Mount home. The residents here that I've spoken with and has come to me want me to express how they feel. They are afraid. Some are saying they are considering relocating. Others are saying this has affected their health because of the uncertainty. So I'm here this evening to ask how long it would be before ounces are given, transparency is done, and that everyone can begin to heal because several have stated the citizens are hurting. And a lot of them will not come. And because of the cruel votes cast, at least in my ward, it's because of this situation. They don't want, as she stated, someone stated, they don't want to vote for one that's there, but they don't want to put a new one in. They're just frustrated. And because of this, this put a bearing on the city of Rocky Mount because as I stated, it's affecting everyone. Not only this past election, but when it comes to affecting citizens' health, I think we need to kind of speed up the process because you, you, you won't know which one's health has been affected, but neighbors, communities are. So this is what I'm bringing to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buller. I'd like to invite Rita Cargan to the podium.
Mayor, councilman, and all. These, the folks before me have spoken so much better than I can. But I do want to just make sure, since I came, that I told you what I need to tell you, which was at every council meeting, if you will, address that $30 million. Tell us where it went, who was in charge of it, all those things. Because we don't want to just sit around and not know. I don't like that. That's, you know, I can't be wise if I don't know what's going on. And this has happened a few, you know, a while back. There was another problem that finally came up. And I'm kind of curious about audits. If you have an audit every year, how could we just learned about it this in the last, you know, couple of months, and we have to get it fixed in 10 months? 10 months, $30 million, that's a lot of money. And I, like I said, I really just want to know, who is the problem? What are we going to do about it? Isn't someone responsible or group responsible? And shouldn't they help pay for this? Not borrowing from the state, not borrowing from here, but whoever's making a mess. Let's see. And with all that in mind, I'm also suffering from a, six weeks in June, I had poor water quality. I couldn't drink out of it. I was afraid to wash my clothes. I had to go to my neighbor's house, had to go to the laundry mat. And the first week, they said they're changing over, that it'll be done in two weeks. The next week, I called in and said, this is really bad. I can't even wash my clothes now. And it's going to be changed. But when I read the report, it said it was changed in the first week of June, so it should have been taken care of by the third week. But for six weeks, it's messed up my filter pot, you know, water containers and things like that. But those are things that that $30 million could have fixed. Now, if there's something wrong with our water system, let's fix that first because we live with our water. We like to have city water. And then also, another aside, because of all the money that's gone, there's over discharge flying into the Tar River when we're, when we have a heavy downpour. And from what I understand, it's from the old pipes. That was 10 years ago. It was cited 10, y'all, not y'all. 10 years ago, the council had made aware of that, and they still haven't fixed it, or we haven't fixed it because I'm the taxpayer, y'all working with the money that we all give you and or bring to the table. And anyway, so if you would just address the $30 million every time, that would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cargan. I can assure you and everyone here that we are committed to submitting our annual report with the audit, which I think you'll do in October, which we're shooting for. You'll speak for that in terms of venture.
Yes, so the audit is due this year December 31st. Our goal is to have it completed prior to then. And all of our audits for the last several years have been posted online and have been posted online for the last year or so. So that information is on the, online and is available for, if you want a hard copy, you can actually ask us to print it out for you as well.
In addition, we will submit the state audit soon as it's completed as well. So with that, we're going to move on to item number nine. I'm sorry, yes, Councilman Neidall.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I appreciate all the comments. And I'm not going to address them one by one. I just want to say that when employees were being mistreated and looked differently than others in different departments, I spoke up, Ruben spoke up. My job is to notify my constituents. You can go read the minutes of every meeting from the time of the past city manager was employed and to the time he left this city. Every meeting, myself and Ruben was being disrespected. Every meeting. When the police got a 30% increase and the fire department came and got negotiated a 27% increase. When the sanitation worker came, they asked for money, more money, along with the public works, parks, and rent. We fought like the dickens and was disrespected. Mr. Arnie Jones lost his job. Only if you came and get support. And I wore the sanitation uniform to represent outstanding sanitation workers. It was my job. Several of you in the audience, I went to you individually and asked you to please come, had given you notes on what to speak on. It was just a handful. That whole year being disrespected in the public, denied information in the public. Some of my colleagues eventually asked for information and was not given it. So I just want to say, it said a prophet is not honoring his own town. But since I've been here, I'm speaking about Andre. My campaign slogan was, "I will fight for the people." Regardless of what people say about me, lies are told. Take the strength to hold my head up, sit in this chair every meeting, and look every citizen in the eye and speak from my heart, whether they believe me or not. And my slogan was, "Unbossed and unbought. Knight would fight for you." And I have fought up into this form. Some of you may like it and some of you may not. Read the minutes. It could be 50 years from now. But when they read the minutes and people tell the story, I stood on the side of right. And so every meeting, the city manager and I went at it in front of the public square, enclosed session. This is all I could do. Just sound the alarm to the Rocky Mount citizens and to my constituents in my war. So I just want to say, some of those things you're saying that we should have done, we done those things. We done those things. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Neidall, and the member of council point four. All right, we'll move on to item number nine, which the consent is ended. This time, I will entertain a motion to approve the tax releases, to approve the temporary street closure without the ordinances, to authorize staff to apply for grant, authorize the mayor of City Park and director of Parks and Recreation, TSQ, the LWC, Basic Facts and Assurances, and other required documentation and certifications for the final grant application, and to accept the award for the North County Governor's Highway Safety Program, and to authorize the mayor or city manager to execute documents required for retirement, transfer P9 max to a qualified rescue crew. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
A motion, second made by Councilman Donald Ridge. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. And item number 10 is consideration of the recommendations from a planning board meeting, which was held September 9 of 2025, a college and seat of planning board minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask staff, if you please come forward and tell us what we don't have.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Joseph Boekook, Director of Development Services. The item tonight is a rezoning that was recommended for approval by the city's Interdepartmental Development Review Committee and the Rocky Mount Planning Board at their meeting last month in September. The property is located on Northwest Lee and Boulevard at 1521. It's presently zoned Commercial Corridor District or B2, and the property owner has requested to rezone to B5, which is Commercial Services. That allows for a few additional uses that are of higher intensity. Specifically, in this case, the owner desires to tow vehicles to the property in addition to his current automobile service that he offers at the site. Thus, he's made the request. Again, we've recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have on your request.
Do I have any questions from Mr. Koo? Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will open up the podium before to receive public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on request by Jonathan Calabraswell, lessy of the property home by Mike Patel, Rush Kush LLC, to rezone plus or minus 16.7 acres on 1521 of Northwest Lee and Boulevard from B2 to B5. Is there any member of the public who would wish to speak on this particular matter? All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Still move.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Same.
Councilman Walker made the second. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item 11, we added to the agenda tonight, which is the ordinance of ending Chapter 16 of the Code of City of Rocktown entitled Personnel Plan of the City of Rocky Mount. You have the ordinance before you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance as ready?
Still move.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item 12 is, was also added, is a reduction in scheduled contributions to the Rocky Mount Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $120,000. Is there a motion?
Let's see. How much?
$120,000 grant. Motion made by Councilman Neidall, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Joyner, is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right, unless there's any other business to appear towards the city council tonight, I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Do you want to thank Robert Davis, Commissioner?
What's that? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Robbie, I didn't see the audience until this meeting.
Oh, I'm great, no problem. No problem. I got, hey, I got your signs up. They're in storage.
Can we get this on? Okay, thanks, Mr. Davis. Appreciate you looking out there.